Ready? Are you on? All right. I want to welcome everybody to the, uh... Welcome, everybody. Thank you for pushing my button. To the conference agenda meeting for the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. It's June 9, 2015. Can I have a roll call, please?
Freeholders Bartlett.
Here.
Bass.
Here.
Catronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Here.
Lepore.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Laura.
And Freeholder Director Laura is ill, so he won't be here tonight. I have the pleasure of chairing the meeting. I'm going to turn this over to, for the conference agenda, to our Administrator, Anthony DiNola.
Thank you very much, Director. We have a packed conference agenda. I'm going to first call upon Freeholders Bartlett and Duffy to please step to the podium. We are honored to have with us a 2015 Lakeland Lancers varsity baseball team.
Here, on your own.
I'm going to ask their coach to step forward for the proclamation, Rick Capozzi.
And the team.
You want to bring the whole team? All right, bring the whole team. Come on.
Hey, how are you? Some tickets.
We have a proclamation and some certificates.
Congratulations. Good for you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good for you. Nice to meet you.
I listen to you.
Don't hold it against them.
We're going to take a picture when it's all, we'll all get up there and the rest are freeholders.
Okay. Great.
I know it's pretty exciting. Yeah, come on down.
Yeah, come on in.
Yeah, there you go.
Got a bunch of good firm handshakes there. They had the whole lineup and I felt like I should be saying, "Good game, good game, good game."
How many guys are leaving you?
Eight.
Let's see, seniors, raise your hands. All right. Well, thank you all for being here. It's a great pleasure for me, especially, you know, with the sport of baseball. I live across from the Daughter Witch fields in Wayne, and I watched the Little League kids grow through those years. And actually, my son's going to be doing baseball this summer and wants to join his school team next year in the sixth grade. So this is a great privilege to be here and to see, you know, the sort of young men that those players grow into. It's terrific. So I'm going to read our proclamation for you guys. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of Passaic has the desire to recognize the Lakeland Lancers varsity baseball team upon winning the sectional state championship. And whereas the 2015 varsity team from Lakeland Regional High School in Wanacue emerged as victors against a strong and highly favored Ramsey team, two to zero, in front of a very large crowd which included strong support from the Lakeland student body, to win the North One Group Two State sectional championship, the second sectional championship in five years, with strong pitching, hitting, fielding, and contributions from everyone on the team. And whereas, this is the part you dread, it's the long list of names, I apologize in advance. Whereas the members of the team include Shane Davison, Chase Beinert, Stephen Cook, Kyle Labusur, Alec Fadali, Eric Ludgisson. Too many consonants, not enough vowels. Matt Carson, Kyle Novotny, Billy McDonough, A.J. Ursta, Kevin Cavallieri, Jake Manke, Billy Coily, Zach Karazzi, wouldn't have gotten that one, Bo Gilligan, Justin Anderson, Mike Kenzone, Mike Weller, Brett Riley, Avery Davidson, and Stat Girls, Allison Serencenti and Mackenzie Pierce. Are they here?
No.
Okay. And whereas, the team is led by head coach Rick Capozzi, assistant coaches Ron Etzkorn, Mike Capozzi, Brian Sabatelli, and Lou Serencenti. And whereas this board is aware of the great skill and determination and the endless time effort and energy the team expended, which ultimately led to this most outstanding accomplishment. And whereas their families, community, county, and state have every reason to be proud of their outstanding achievement, and this board joins with Lakeland Regional High School in celebrating this momentous occasion. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the county of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges and extends its most heartfelt congratulations to the entire baseball team, and be it further proclaimed that this board expresses its sincere best wishes to the entire team for continued success in all their future endeavors. Signed by all seven of your county freeholders today.
Congratulations, gentlemen. What are you just talking about? What's your language?
Hello. I'm Bo Gilligan, one of the three captains on this team. The other two captains are Steve Cook and Kyle Labusur. I've been a three-year varsity player for under Coach Capozzi, and over the three years, our team has changed drastically. Over those three years, we have lost 18 players about. So this year's team was a completely new roster with new faces on the team, looking for our team to step it up. At first, we came in as a struggling team, looking to find our strengths where they were and how to, like, exploit them over other teams. Throughout the season, we had our ups and downs. We performed great, then we performed poorly. We just couldn't figure out what was happening. We ended up winning our, trying to tie in our conference, which was a great moment because Mike Weller hit a nice home run. Then we, then after we had counties coming up, where we weren't the best seeded team, we were seeded fifth, but we beat the one, two, three, and four, so we had a good shot at winning. We ended up making it to the semifinals where we would end up losing a very heartbreaking game to Wayne Valley, who would eventually win the counties because of a couple hits and one error. We, after that game, our team was a little, like, heartbroken because we thought we could have won it, and that was our year to win. We went in the next couple games, lost a couple, and we just didn't know what was happening. We were ranked still number one for a state tournament, which was coming up, but people were still knocking us out because Ramsey Number Two is a great-looking team with a kid who was hot hitting many home runs in one season. Throughout that state tournament, we found strength in our pitching and fielding, and our hitting was very timely. When we needed the hits, we got them. We ended up winning our first couple games, and people still were thinking Ramsey because Bardzel was hitting many home runs, and I thought he was going to break the record before the championship. So when it became the championship and people still count us out, we were, like, driven to beat them just because of that. And I'm proud here to say that we did, and that we also kept Bardzel one foot short from that home run that he could have had. This season, we found our strengths as a team and ended up bonding better. Last year's team was probably the closest team I've ever played with, but this year's team, we damn sure made it better team.
Congratulations. Take a picture. Here.
Yes, we have certificates.
Terry, they have certificates for them. There are certificates for all the...
Certificates real quick, Mark.
The ones your heart that looked bad.
They're right on the top there.
Come on there. Freeholder, go.
Can you see Billy? Ed, you have to take that stuff.
All right.
I'll put the remote on you.
Let's go. Okay, next we have a presentation. Passaic County received an award for their application for the New Jersey and National Registry of Historic Places for our Passaic County Courthouse, United States Custom House, and Post Office, what we commonly call the Annex around here. So for those who don't know, we have our Planning Director, Michael Laplace, here with us. We have our Historian, Ed Smike, who much of this stuff, we rely on him for. So Ed, I don't know if you want to come up to the podium as well and join Michael. And then I know we have, I guess, a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, please.
Michael?
Just thank you, Mr. DiNola. Director, members of the board, members of the public, thank you for this opportunity to talk about this very exciting award that this county has won. May is Historic Preservation Month in the United States, and as part of that celebration, New Jersey gives awards from its Historic Preservation Office to outstanding initiatives and projects that highlight really the best actions for historic preservation in New Jersey. And Passaic County has been recognized, and the award is one of the awards you see on the table there, one's for the freeholders and one's for our county historian, which I'll get to in a second, for the work that was done in preparing the application to put the courthouse and the courthouse annex, what we call the Annex, on the state and national registers. We're really excited about this because what it represents is the leadership that this Freeholder Board and this administration has shown in terms of historic preservation, both for preserving and celebrating our heritage, but also in terms of economic development, to bring people into Passaic County, to let them know the rich history and bright future that we have, as our slogan says, but also to really put us on the map. Passaic County is one of the best-kept secrets in New Jersey in terms of its heritage, its built-in natural environments, and we want to celebrate that and promote it. So this is a wonderful way that the state has recognized it. So first up, to talk about the importance of the awards, but also the importance of preservation in general, and the role that the county has taken in historic preservation, and certainly for two of its most iconic buildings, our courthouse and annex, is Edward Smike, who is our county historian. Ed's been the catalyst and the advocate for preserving these and many other buildings in the county for many years. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Ed.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, freeholders. Now ladies and gentlemen, when I became county historian many, many years ago, as Freeholder Duffy would say, it was in 1837, so I...
Twenty-six, wasn't it?
1837. So I've seen a lot that has transpired, and when I became county historian, we had a number of very historic buildings that were in a state of disrepair. And the last couple of years, the Freeholder Board has taken quite an initiative in restoring these buildings. And why should we restore them? Well, that's a question that's often asked. Well, these buildings connect us with our past, and they can tell us things about our past. We should know about our past because what are each of us without our history? And when I look at these buildings, these magnificent buildings, our Dy Mansion, which was restored with Freeholder money in 1933, 1934, there was no major work done on that building. It's being done now. We are moving along. We have a firm by the name of John Milner and Sons, excellent architects out of Philadelphia that are working on this building. We're also building a visitor's center. These are all initiatives, again, undertaken by the Board of Freeholders after many years where the buildings were neglected and other priorities were seen. So there wasn't the money for these buildings. We've seen improvements, and our camp hope director is here. A very historic camp for children, underprivileged children in this county, has been transformed, the historic buildings, historic work. So it's a very salutary effort. And you know what? What we did with the courthouse itself, the courthouse, the building, the courthouse pla- we're doing a courthouse plaza now, but I'm talking about the neoclassical courthouse. The architect Esperidge Reed selected one of the best architects in the area. And we have our federal building, originally a federal building, the Northern Mannerist Dutch Renaissance courthouse annex, originally a post office in Patterson. So these are buildings that connect us with our past and tell us about our present. And it's been very, it's an honor for me to be able to have worked on this and to supply to the best of my ability the historic documentation necessary to document the buildings so we can get these state and national recognition that's so essential for us. So with, without further ado, I would like to introduce Annabelle Radcliffe-Trenor of Historic Building Architects, who was the consultant on the development of the historic site nomination, which was quite successful. Annabelle?
Thank you, freeholders. I'm going to give you a little PowerPoint, a little history, some of which you will find in fact news, remember. To that, what do I do here, everyone?
Oh, okay, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Got to get picked with it. Okay, so I'm sorry the top got chopped off, but as you rightly said, the Annex, everybody gets a little confused, but actually, the Passaic County courthouse, the United States Custom House, was actually a federal building when it was first built. It's now known as the Annex, and of course, we also have the courthouse as well. So I'm just going to give you a little tour and a little bit of history about what we wrote about for the National Register nomination, and I'll move along with the slides quite quickly. So the building has now been listed on May 28, 2015, on the state register. It is now at the National in Washington, D.C., being reviewed by the National Park Service, and we anticipate listing to occur in July of this year. So I want to congratulate you on that initiative that you took for that. You may not know, but in 1936, you actually acquired the custom house, the Annex building, as part of your court system, and then it became the Annex to the courthouse. So that's how the name occurred. Let's see if I can move this on. So originally, the building site was selected in, and this is an 1840 map, it was actually the governor of the Society of the Useful Manufacturers. It was his home, and it was a large property, and it was selected, and then it was subdivided. And today, of course, Lee Place does not go through between the Annex and the courthouse, but originally, Lee Place went through, as did DeGrasse, and now we have the new courthouse on the other side. So that was blocked off. But that was the property. You'll be glad to hear they paid $22,000 in 1893 for the entire property. I thought that would, you'd enjoy that fact with your budget coming up. 1915, this lot was already built up. This is a Sanborn map, these are the insurance maps, and you can see both the Annex and the courthouse located there, with the two streets still in place. So there are a number of different categories that we use for listing a building on the national register, and one of the interesting sort of dilemmas for me was when I looked at these two buildings, they're sort of architecturally, style-wise, diametrically different. We've got a sort of very elaborate Flemish-style Dutch building, and then we have a rather classical, what we all recognize as a courthouse in this state, in this country. And so the question was, why would we have these two so different buildings built within six years of each other? And this was the sort of thing that was bothering me. It was easy to describe the architecture, which is criteria in C, and say it's a fabulous historic building. But there is also a story to be told here about these two buildings and what they represent nationally in this country. And really, the significance that we're dealing with here is, most people didn't realize, but federally funded and federal buildings were all designed by the architect of the Treasury. And they were designed in Washington, D.C., and there's some wonderful articles about how they imagined Patterson to be this wonderful silk industry, so they decided to put a Flemish building here in Patterson. They had no idea what your architecture was like. They were busy designing in Washington, D.C. And all the public buildings that you see around the country were largely designed in Washington, D.C. by the architect of the Treasury. So that was very interesting. But the transition here is, we transition at this point, the federal government has an act called the Tomsy Act, which allows public competition by architects. It had been campaigned by the AIA, and so they asked to have competitions. So the courthouse building was built with one of the first public competitions ever. The freeholders chose to have a public competition. So this is partly why we get such very different styles. We have one being designed in D.C. and one being designed in a competition that the freeholders are actively involved in. So this is why you see the significant difference between these two buildings. And wow, when you first saw these buildings, it was pretty dramatic for people walking along the street, on Hamilton Street. So the United States Custom House and Post Office, the Annex building, there's an early sketch by an architect called William Martin Aitken. I mentioned his idea of the silk industry and his Flemish-style building. He then resigned as architect, and they were, the architect of the Treasury was constantly changing. And then an architect called James Knox Taylor was to the right there, was the next architect to be responsible for the building. And then somebody you will know, Fred Wesley Wentworth, became the supervising architect for this project. It was one of the first projects he ever had in Patterson, and then he went on to do some wonderful buildings. I just went on a tour of his buildings in downtown Patterson, and he designed many important buildings here. So he supervised the work, and there are wonderful correspondence with him and James Knox Taylor. James Knox Taylor wanting Treasury in D.C. to keep control, and Wentworth saying, "No, no, no, we need to select this material, that material, it's more appropriate." So there was a discussion going on there. So it was finished in 1903, and this is a view, actually, of the building from Lee The courthouse, the custom house actually had a very interesting plan. They built a second floor in 1937, and when you took it over, and I'll show you that, and that was your new freeholder room, that became your freeholder room, which is a wonderful deco space. So the period of significance goes from the beginning of construction through to 1937, includes that wonderful freeholder space. But before that, the post office room was a huge room. You know the steep pitched spaces? It was like a five-story room, and that was the mail sorting room for all the post office. And in fact, it was undersized by the time it was complete because Patterson was growing so quickly, and the postal service couldn't actually cope with the demand, nor could the custom house, which was in the front end of the building. So the competition then started, which is related to Samuel Esperidge, who Ed mentioned, Mr. Smike mentioned. This is great. Here we have a competition. You hire a very respected professor where, who was head of architecture at Columbia University, and he selects 12 architects for the final selection by the freeholders. You reject the lot and decide you want Samuel Esperidge. So, and I have not got to the, there's one set of meeting minutes in the freeholder notes that are missing, and so, and of course, it's that period, and I would love to know why you made that decision, a long time ago now. But anyway, there was this lawsuit actually filed by the architects against the freeholders, which was then eventually disbanded, and you got your architect and you got your design that you wanted. So the courthouse really has some fabulous elements to it, some of which have been lost. If you look on the right, you'll see a side of what was the original grand staircase that was filled with an elevator. The elements of that are still there. In fact, the windows from the courtroom look over that light well. Of course, light and electricity was expensive, so the design of light and air through the courthouse ventilation was an important part of Burridge's design. The second criteria relates to the architectural significance. These are fabulous buildings, and in fact, when we went, when Michael and I went to the review, they said, "Why haven't these been listed before?" They couldn't believe they weren't already on both the national and state registers. So they are architecturally really spectacular gems. They need to be loved and cared for. They're, of course, complex buildings, but they really are excellent examples of their particular styles. The Flemish style here with its wonderful limestone trim work, wonderful carvings, if you look carefully, there are some magnificent stone seals. On the inside, there's also some great features. I don't know whether you've been in the building recently, but it really has preserved. You have Gustavino vaulting, same as the Oyster Bar in New York. You have a wonderful carved Zealand lions, which were mythical lions from the Dutch period. And you have glazed-colored ceramic tiles, all of which are great examples of the style. The custom house, of course, is much more classical, much more recognized with its important role as a courthouse for you, and its magnificent dome, which is actually a double dome. It has a dome within a dome, and on the top right slide, you'll see, it looks like a Fabergé egg from the back, these wonderful colored glass that I think you've just finished doing some restoration. The courtrooms are really quite splendid and have a lot of evidence above of the original skylights. They're all still there, so they would make wonderful things to put back maybe in the future. And then, of course, there is this glass floor in the center of the rotunda, which is quite magnificent, and a very early reinforced steel glass floor, quite unique and quite splendid. And then, of course, the rotunda itself with its wonderful glass. But there is also quite a lot of important art objects. Gattano Frederici was a sculptor, and he designed both of the two sculptural pieces that you have. They are also included in the national register. They like to include art as well. And also, you have wonderful wrought iron fences. So we have James Fleming Stewart, and we have William Hughes as the two wonderful examples of sculpture, bronze sculpture outside. The last piece is this fantastic art deco room, which was the freeholder room, which was designed by E.M. Lee, a local architect here, but really designed with wonderful finishes and wonderful WPA artwork depicting the whole art history of Passaic County. And that was designed by Frignoca, and was, I don't know much about the artist, but it's a really wonderful... a really wonderful piece, needs to be cleaned and looked after, but it is quite impressive, and it depicts the whole history of the county. So, I want to really thank you very much for supporting the nomination, freeholders. You have given something wonderful for future generations here in helping to recognize the importance, and it's been a really fun project for us to research. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I always take a picture of the awards? Take a picture of holding the awards?
Ed and Michael, why don't you come up? We'll take a little quick picture with holding the awards, and then...
Yeah, somebody's got to hold the award, Mike.
Yeah, freeholders, come up. Annabelle, why don't you come up?
Nice job.
Come in front of the table. Everybody, please come in front of the table. In front of the table.
Massachusetts.
Don't pretend you don't like it, Rhonda. Don't pretend you don't like it.
That's why she's not running. Tired of the beauty.
She's in therapy.
See the top of my head in this one. Well, it's a big crowd, it's not that.
Okay. On three. One, two, three.
Who's that? Take a picture with somebody. That's the best time to take pictures.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see you wear a freeholder suit today.
We're gonna put some pictures, historic pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, something not on the agenda, but of course, being who he is, he sniffed it out already. I'm gonna ask, I can't say Mr. Smike, 'cause his brother is here as well, the elder Mr. Smike, to come forward to the podium, and we have a proclamation that Freeholder Lepore is going to present on behalf of Passaic County, really. Ed, for your 40 years of service, celebrating this year as Passaic County historian, I might add that it is a job that has no salary.
Big bucks.
And he does it out of love, and I will tell you that most of what you are seeing here in Passaic County is because of Ed Smike's determined and his real vision and his desire to see these historic facilities restored. But he also understands our limitations with money, and I think that's what makes Ed maybe different than many of his counterparts in certainly Passaic County and the state. But Ed, I personally want to thank you for everything that you've done in helping me do my job, and I think the Freeholder Proclamation will say what they feel and know about Ed Smike and the job that you've done for Passaic County.
Good to work with you.
Thank you.
Ed, just so you know, this is just a template. The little one is being framed.
Oh, how nice.
So, you get to keep this one as an IOU when you get the framed one. Okay. It gives me great pleasure. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic is desirous of recognizing Edward A. Smike for 40 years of service to the County of Passaic as county historian. Ed Smike was born and raised in Patterson, attended Patterson Public Schools, earned a BA in political science, a BA in sci...
Da.
Say that.
Sociology.
Sociology, from Fairleigh Dickinson University. Ed Smike was appointed to the Board of Chosen Freeholders as county historian in 1975. He has been affiliated with Passaic County Historical Society since 1963, where he's served in various positions. Ed Smike has conducted extensive research on the history of Passaic County and its municipalities, and has written many articles and publications involving historic events and historic sites, including the Hamilton Club, Lambert Castle, Day Mansion, St. John the Baptist Cathedral, Eastside Park, Morris Canal, and the Patterson Great Falls. Ed Smike was instrumental in many endeavors, and he has received many accolades for his work in pursuit of historical scholar and scholarly research and efforts in preserving much of the history of the County of Passaic, including many documents, photographs, and related items reflected events that occurred many years ago. Throughout his 40 years as county historian, Edward A. Smike has been a resource for many county officials and the administration when seeking background information on many events which occurred in Passaic County. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to Edward A. Smike by recognizing him for his committed and dedicated service to the citizenry of Passaic County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it publicly acknowledges Edward A. Smike for the significant contributions he has made, and the time, the effort, and the energy which he has unselfishly devoted to the citizenry of Passaic County, and be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Edward A. Smike continued health, happiness, and success. Ed?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Three minutes to wrap.
Three minutes to wrap. Freeholder Duffy keeps me in line. You know, forty, as I said, forty years ago when I came here, I got involved, 50 years ago, with the Historical Society, and I saw some members of the Historical Society, and I said, "These are pretty old gentlemen, old men." I said, "My God," I said, "I looked near, and I said, "After 40 years, I'm becoming, getting to look like some of these men that I met many years ago." But seriously, you have to have a passion for this thing. People say to me, "Well, why do you do it?" "Well, I guess there's a measure of insanity involved in shutting yourself up with books and papers and documents." But you know what it is, ladies and gentlemen? It's the voyage of discovery. It's the enjoyment of finding out these things and being able to share this knowledge with people and get them excited in their history, and save some buildings and do some things for the people, because that's what it's all about, it's doing things for the people. And I was very fortunate to be employed by the County of Passaic and to work with many fine people over the years. So, it's been quite an odyssey and quite an adventure, and I want to thank each and every freeholder, the county administrator, the clerk of the board, and the other county officials that I've had the privilege of working with for these 40 years. Thank you very much.
Why don't we bring your brother up too, as well?
By the way, Ed, we had to pay your brother to come up here. You didn't, I don't know if you knew that.
Oh, man.
You ran away.
Come on, Pat, on this side.
Doesn't matter, right side, left side.
Mr. Tinnobbe, you want in this?
No, I'm sorry. I was trying to get out of the picture.
They started in 1837 here, where the county was established.
Tony, why don't you happen? Tony's gonna happen. Tony?
Oh, Anthony, get in.
Oh, go ahead, please. I don't want to spoil the real picture.
We're proud of day two. My brother retired, he was a corporate treasurer for...
Did he sign it?
Ed, would you autograph that?
Oh, sure.
Date it too, but don't put 1837.
It's already done.
You signed it, you signed it for Freeholder Lepore. Sign it over to me.
You must have gotten it from...
Let me put the side over to you.
That is pretty cool.
There were a lot of print now.
Come on, guys, we've got a lot to do, we've got a budget hearing tonight.
Thank you very much.
Ed, congratulations again, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our public hearing on the 2015 CDPG. Grant plan?
That's right. Thank you very much.
In your burgundy folder is the information that...
That's right. That's good. I'm moving, I'm moving.
Yep, sure. This here, this public hearing is being held in accordance with the Federal Regulations 24 CFR Part 91 in the Passaic County's Plan for Citizen Participation. Passaic County has prepared a new annual action plan for fiscal year 2015 for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you. Okay. Passaic County Department of Planning and Economic Development has managed the Passaic County Community Development Block Grant Program since 2008. Since that time, we've received approximately $6.209 million, and today, what we're doing is, we've prepared the action plan for fiscal year 2015 in accordance with the objectives of the five-year consolidated plan, which is in effect between fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2017. The annual plan covers the program period from September 1st, 2015, to August 31st, 2015, and a summary of the projects recommended for funding has been distributed and has been on public display for 30 days. The county will receive $872,751 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for 2015 program year. I just want to make a note that these funds are projected to be awarded to us in September 2015. The 2015 grant allocation, a portion of this funding, $101,858 for fiscal year 2015, was reallocated from Westchester County, New York, due to the settlement of a lawsuit with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for their failure to affirmatively further fair housing. Currently, Westchester County has filed a lawsuit questioning the portions, the actions of HUD, and if this lawsuit is settled in favor of Westchester County, Passaic County will receive a reduced fiscal year 2015 grant award of $770,883. The county has sufficient funds from prior years that are pending reallocation to provide funding for all 2015 projects as described in the fiscal year 2015 action plan. Therefore, there'll be no change in the proposed activities included in the 2015 action plan as put on public display. As you're aware, the objective of this program is to assist low and moderate-income residents and individuals with special needs or presumed benefit of Passaic County in the 12 participating communities of the county: Bloomingdale, Halden, Hawthorne, Little Falls, North Halden, Pompton Lakes, Prospect Park, Ringwood, Totowa, Wanacue, West, Milford, and Woodland Park. In addition, nonprofit agencies providing services to low, moderate-income individuals in the 12 participating municipalities are also eligible to receive funding. No more than 15% of the grant may be used for public service allocations and activities. So, applications for municipalities and nonprofit organizations to receive CDPG funding are issued in January of each year, and applications are due in March. For fiscal year 2015, applications are due March 12th, and our first meeting and briefing for 2015 was held on February 5th, 2015, and this is our second public hearing to solicit comments from the public on our action plan. The projects that are proposed include the Borough of Bloomingdale, Reeve Avenue Utility Reconstruction for $100,000; Borough of Halden, paving and milling of Lewis Street and Circle Avenue, $120,000; Borough of Hawthorne, $50,000; Borough of Tot... I'm sorry, that was for paving of Vincent Street; Borough of Totowa, sanitary sewer lining project, Phase IV, $101,066; Borough of Wanacue, water main replacement of North Maple Avenue and Maple Avenue, Phase II, that's $100,000; Township of West Milford, ADA improvements to the Westbrook Teen Center, $50,000; Borough of Woodland Park, Woodland Park Street Improvement Project, $60,000, that's on Radcliffe Avenue and Ray Avenue. And there's also, under our nonprofit sector, Morris County Habitat, in partnership with Patterson Habitat for Humanity, they are developing and reconstructing 27 Chatham Road and Hewitt, West Milford, a low-mod housing one-house, and they have been actually designated as a redeveloper in West Milford, and they've been very supportive of this activity. We're also recommending Catholic Family and Community Services for Project Link, $20,000. They assist seniors in reaching shopping, doctor's visits, et cetera, different appointments that they might have, and New Bridge Services, project sale, $12,135. Then they also do very similar things, assisting homebound seniors, they do it in different communities. And again, this year, for the second time, we're funding Fair Housing Council of Northern New Jersey for $10,000. They counsel low, moderate-income individuals on their rights under the Fair Housing Act, federal and state. And in fact, this year, they'll be running a series of counseling sessions in Prospect Park, and for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year will be the same kind of thing, and they'll be doing a seminar on, a fair housing seminar in Prospect Park, 'cause that's one of our stronger low-mod communities. And I anticipate they'll also be at the county fair for at least one of the days, hopefully on a weekend, to provide counseling to caregivers if they have that interest. Okay. So, I'm at this point, if anyone has a desire to be heard on the fiscal year 2015 action plan, I urge the public...
We're going to do that by motion.
Yes, yes.
Deb, just for...
Any questions?
Yeah, just remind everyone, there are a few of our communities that receive their own allocation from CDPG.
That's exactly correct. We're an urban county, and the 12 municipalities that I mentioned earlier participate, Wayne, Passaic, Patterson, and Clifton receive their own allocations from HUD. That's why our funding does not include them. Any questions from the board?
Deb, the $101,000 that's subject to the Westchester qualification...
Yes.
Do we end up receiving all or part of that? Will that simply be surplus available for future years?
What will happen is, we have, as you remember, we discussed this all at the Planning and Economic Development Committee, so we have some funding left over, a little bit here or there, so we will reprogram that, and it comes up to about $100,001. So, if we receive the full allocation, we will reprogram those prior funds from fiscal year 2008, 9, 10, 11, 12, right, 13, not more than that, 'cause 14 projects are just being implemented now. And then, we'll have some additional funds to allocate for projects. But fortunately, we had a little bit left over, and we won't be as drastically impacted. And I don't think HUD will know until September, we're supposed to have our grant awards start September 1st, we may not know till the end of September, they're notoriously late. So, fortunately, we have covered ourselves.
I did it. Everything's done.
Any other questions?
Correct. All right. We need to have a motion to open the public portion of this hearing.
Make that motion.
May I feel it, Duffy said, everybody, Freeholder Cutroneo, draw.
Freeholders Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Cutroneo...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lepore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James...
Yes. Is anybody present, desire to be heard on the fiscal year 2015 action plan outlined by Debbie Hoffman?
Seeing you on the podium, I move to close the public session.
Second.
Ball.
Freeholders Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Cutroneo...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lepore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James...
Yes. Back to you.
plan outlined by our deputy office?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public session.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Deputy Director James?
Yes, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Okay, we have a second public hearing on the adoption of the Emergency Response and Cost Recovery Ordinance, as amended. The second reading and adoption of the ordinance will take place during the regular meeting tonight, following the conference agenda.
And so I will just add to what you just said, Administrator, the public hearing was advertised in both the Herald News and the Bergen Record on June 5, 2015, that'll serve as my public announcement.
Okay. You need a roll call?
Yep, freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Here.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Here.
Lapore...
Deputy Director James?
Here. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the adoption of the Emergency Response and Cost Recovery Ordinance, as amended? Moved by Freeholder Duffy, seconded by Freeholder Katronio. Anyone present a desire to be heard in the adoption of the Emergency Response and Cost Recovery Ordinance, as amended?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public session.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. Can I do a roll call?
You did do a roll call.
Okay.
And we're all here.
Okay, all right, there.
No.
All right.
Close the portion, second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes, can I have a motion to adjourn that public hearing? Same two people, roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
That concludes my portion of the conference agenda, Director.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Director, whatever we call him.
Whatever. All right, can I have a review of the consent agenda, N1 through N47, any questions?
There is one proposed late starter. Okay.
Any, are there any late starters?
Yes, there is one proposed late starter, which would be designated as N48. It's a resolution authorizing the exercise of the final one-year option to renew the contract with Gourmet Dining Correctional Food Services for food services at the Passaic County Jail.
Thank you. Take care of that, any questions? We will take care of that when we get to the conference agenda. Are there any reason to go on a closed session, or...
No.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the conference agenda, please?
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Yep, freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. And when you're ready, we welcome to the actual meeting, Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, June 9, 2015, and as we announced, we will open the public meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement to open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying its time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted, the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk post in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Roll call, please.
Freeholders, Bartlet, Best...
Here.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Here.
Lapore...
Here.
Deputy Director James?
Here.
Director Loar?
All right, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing? We're going to have a moment of silence, remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States armed forces?
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough so that blessed thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 26, 2015? Moved by Freeholder Duffy, seconded by Freeholder Katronio, roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Can I have a motion to, I'm sorry, a motion to approve proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Freeholder Best, seconded by Freeholder Bartlet, roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes, can I have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Hold on for a second. Moved by Freeholder Best, seconded by Freeholder Katronio.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes, and we're going into budget matters. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the 2015 cap resolution R15306, adopted first reading Monday, May 12, 2015, to exceed index rate NJSA 48 colon 4 dash 45, as noted in the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
You get that, Lou?
Yep, Lapore and Katronio.
Right, roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Does anyone present a desire to be heard on the 2015 cap resolution R15306? Anyone?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public session.
Second.
Roll.
Yes.
Sorry, freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Can I have a motion for final adoption of 2015 cap resolution R15306, as noted in the resolution?
Move it.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the 2015 Passaic County budget introduced May 12, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Best and Lapore.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Is anyone present a desire to be heard on the 2015 Passaic County budget? Please go to the podium and state your name, address.
Over here, sir.
Good evening, Dominic Villano, I'm the city manager of Clifton, 900 Clifton Avenue. Thank you for affording me this opportunity to speak, I'll be brief. Mayor Nzali indicated to me that we've always supported in the past, we attended the Freeholders' Meeting in either support or voice our concerns about the budget. In keeping with past practice and at the council's request, I've been asked to speak on the increase in the budget. I understand that you're proposing a 4.9 increase. Clifton being one of the largest contributors, we'll see approximately a 2.9 increase to the residents. This follows a last year's increase of approximately $162 to the average home. Both the CFO and I have looked at the budget, and certainly we can understand that we all face with the increase in the healthcare, in the salaries, the pension. However, there was some, there was one in particular, which seemed to be a substantial increase over 10%, and the council had expressed our concern if there's anything you can do to relook at your budget and possibly make some cuts. We went through about six, six or seven alternates, and ultimately we came up with our budget, and we were able to keep it at a 0% increase. So, my instructions are to appeal to you to see if there's anything that can be done to, you know, keep it under the 2%. Thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Let me just ask you while you're standing there, as a courtesy, you're the city manager or a second largest city. The 10% that you're talking about is in what area?
It was one salary, one of the departments. It was in excess of 10%, actually.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the budget?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes, can I, just look at this here where we amend?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to amend the budget. The budget amendment, I think, was distributed?
Mm-hmm. Can we do a motion to add the amendment first?
You have to add the, okay. I have a motion to add the amendment to the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Because I wanted to add the amendment to the agenda, and now we'll vote on the amendment.
All right, so I need a motion to vote on the amendment that was added, according to our clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
This is to add the amendment?
Yes.
No, to vote.
To pass the amendment.
To pass the amendment.
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. And can I get a motion to adopt the 2015 County Budget?
Move it.
Second.
Lapore and Best...
Yes. Roll.
Freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. All right, can I have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
Do we want to just...
Second.
Well, I, yeah, sure do.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Before we take the roll, Dan, can we...
No, no, I just, Nick, I'm not sure which of the salary line items were 10%, but overall, county spending is down by almost three-quarters of a million dollars. The entire increase this year, unfortunately, is due to healthcare and the pension costs. So you might find an individual line that is up 10%. You know, I see that, I think the sheriff's courthouse security is up. If you saw yesterday, the governor just nominated six new judges, but if you look total in the sheriff's budget, he's up less than 2%. So you will find an individual line that's up, but you're going to find other lines that are down, you know, depending. But unfortunately, or fortunately, however, whichever side of the bench you're sitting on, county government is required to provide the security for the courthouses. So I don't know if that's the particular line, but, you know, if you could just relay to the mayor that spending under this board's control actually was reduced by three-quarters of a million dollars this year, so...
And I think, Nick, the state made us pay, we had a contract that took years to settle with the PBAs and the sheriff's department. We used to be able to pay retroactive pension for those contracts that were settled over time, over a period of time, the state insisted we pay the entire thing this year. That equated to about $5 million?
Four and a half.
All right, and the state owes us $13 million, which they're refusing to pay us. So, you know, if we had those things that the state owes us, and we had the same courtesy and rules in place in paying back pension, you know, they have people that don't pay into pension, or the state. You know the locales do, and we don't have a choice, but we were hit with almost a $5 million payment on that, and lacking, you know, the state not agreeing to pay us back $13 million they owe us, put us in a rough year. You'll have to ask the governor, you know, what he's doing with the $13 million, and why he wanted the $5 million back so quickly, you know? We don't get to pay 10 cents or 3 cents on a dollar, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Also wanted to point out that even if the county was able to cut spending, taxes in Clifton probably would still go up. As you know, it's a percentage that each municipality pays. The fact that a place like Patterson lost, you know, $3 billion worth of ratables in their last revows is going to have an impact across the county. So even if, again, the county of Passaic were to cut by 5%, taxes in other places like Clifton will still go up because of other municipalities. So the burden is shared amongst all 16 municipalities. The fact that you're getting an increase, again, it shows that Clifton is a stable community. But in other places, you know, throughout the county, they're actually seeing a decrease in the county portion that they're paying towards the, in taxes that they're paying towards the county. So although it went up slightly in Clifton, in other places like Patterson, it's gone down dramatically. And the fact that it went down dramatically means that, you know, other places have to have to pick up a little more. It's not a formula that we came up with, it's something that's mandated to us by the state. So if you could just explain that to the council, I understand their frustration, they think it's us, but again, even if we were to cut spending and cut our budget by 5%, taxes will still go up in Clifton.
I just want to point out to the freeholders, last year's tax bill, our city manager, sitting there, actually explained to the citizens of Clifton, there was a record number of successful tax appeals in Patterson last year, and that impacted, and Nick actually sent that out to all the citizens. So he's aware of how that works and was very kind last year to tell the citizens exactly what was going on, so we do appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I live there. So, all right, can we have a vote on that last motion, please?
Okay.
Just roll call.
Yeah, roll call. Freeholders, I'm sorry, freeholders, Bartlet...
Yes.
Best...
Yes.
Katronio...
Yes.
Duffy...
Yes.
Lapore...
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes. Can I have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll.
That's what we just did. that it was important to recognize their accomplishments, to celebrate them. And the event was underwritten by NJCDC, so it was free for the kids and all of their family. And we also got a lot of community people and some of our elected officials and organizations to donate over $12,000 of scholarships that we awarded to college students, to students who will be attending college this upcoming fall. And I passed around, and I have some here, some of the programs and yearbooks of all of the students who are going to college, some impressive schools that they're going to. And I just want to really say thank you for all of the support that the county provided, and in particular, our Roads Department for helping us out with some checks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just, through you, Director, just want to praise Freeholder Best. It was a very, very inspiring evening. I was there yesterday evening.